Everybody ready?
We're ready.
Yes. All right. Good evening, welcome. It is 6:30 PM. Today is Thursday, April 14th. This is the Olentangie School Board of Education regular meeting. This is a business meeting. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can someone speak your motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Nope. So please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. All right, so the agenda is approved. So a few quick comments for me in terms of Board President's report. Last time we were together, we actually had a work session. It was last Monday. Thought the work session was very productive. We hadn't frankly had one in a while. So I thought it was good that we had one to update the long-term strategy and some of the things you want to focus on relative to the strategy. So I thank the Board for some robust participation and conversation. And I think Mr. Rafe will touch upon next steps in the superintendent's report, but I thought that was a good use of our time and good dialogue from the Board. So that may be a work down from Ms. Patrick for any updates from facilities or anything else you want to talk about.
We did have facilities last week, didn't we?
And Mr. Lester, maybe you want to start?
Yeah.
Is that ready?
Yeah, happy to. So we had our Facilities Committee meeting last week. We talked a little bit on the progress on Middle School 6, you know, some of the issues going on with construction. We're moving forward there and initially budgeted for it appropriately. We talked a little bit about Elementary School 17, a couple of options for locations. We've got to think through that, but ultimately we think we're going to have to start construction next year on that, especially with the way the market is moving and with some of the costs and the, you know, the construction materials that are going on. We talked a little bit about the technology and custodial facility that we're working on and looked at different options for that that Mr. Gordon I know will be presenting on for us. We have a lot of issues with the technology space that we have now, growing out of it here in the main administration building. So we're looking forward to some additional facilities there. And, you know, beyond that, it's just looking forward to, you know, 23 Elementary, 23 and 24 moving on, or, I'm sorry, Elementary 17 and 18 and moving on and looking at where the projections are.
All right, great. Mindy, you want to say?
No, that's pretty much it. I believe the Facilities Committee will be recommending. We had moved the construction of Elementary 17 back year.
Pull that forward?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
No.
Dabberco?
No.
Okay.
I have a presentation problem.
That will go right into our presentation item. So it's our only presentation item. It's a Teacher Academy Year in Review, Sunday Weekly, as the instructor, and she's going to lead the dialogue. If the whole group would like to come up, that'd be great. Ashley George, Glenn Mills, and Abby Ryan.
Thank you. We had a slight change to the students speaking, but it's on the slide. So thank you for having us so much. The clicker's up here, okay. Here we go. So this is our year in review. These are some of our students we have. Of course, more students than are here tonight, but they're busy, of course, and so I had a few volunteers come to join in our presentation. So Educators Rising was a big focus of our year. That's new to our Teacher Academy program, so I'll explain a little bit more about that. This year, we did a lot of service projects. That was also new. We embedded that into our curriculum. And we built community partnerships to support our students, to learn more about our community, the needs of our community, and how teachers can get involved and support students. And for the first time, we participated in the Educators Rising State Conference. So I'm going to share a little bit about Educators Rising, and then I'll turn it over to the students to share their experiences and more about what we did. So all the students enrolled in Teacher Academy this year joined Educators Rising. So it's a student organization. And in these bullet points here, it kind of outlines some of the things that it does to support programs. So really, the idea is to grow your own program, encourage students to go into the teaching profession, give support while they're in high school. There's also options to be involved in college and hopefully kind of support them in their profession as teachers so that they have a positive experience and stay in their profession. So again, our highlights were service projects. We did a lot with leadership, speaking when we could, and looking for ways to get involved in our community. Fundraisers, that was new for me. I've never done fundraisers. So Karen Sidoti was so supportive as I navigated all the hoops of fundraising. So that was new, and we did really well, I feel like, and have lots of goals for next year. And like I said, we attended and participated in the state conference. The students did wonderful. If you can see our trophy there. I take it with me everywhere I go. So I'll turn it over to Ellie to share.
Like Ms. Weekly mentioned, we participated in numerous amount of service projects. Our first one was Read for the Record. This was where students had the opportunity to go into preschools and elementary schools and read to the kids. We had the PEN Holiday Clearing House, which was People in Need. We had the opportunity to go and help sort gifts for families that weren't able to afford gifts. So they got those gifts to provide for their families. We had the Snowflake Movement, where we had time at the Teacher Academy, and Ms. Weekly took us back to elementary school and taught us again how to make snowflakes for nationwide children so they could decorate the place and the kids could see that. My very own blanket, we made tie blankets for foster care, so that was an amazing experience. And the school supply collection, that was what we took to the Ed Rising Conference, and that's where we got our hardware from. We won that when we competed against all the other schools because we had the most amount of school supplies.
All right, this is me.
Oh, this is the video from Read for the Record.
Oh, yeah. So it's not me. How do you play this?
Here's what I typically do.
That's okay.
What I typically do is I look at that guy over there. Justin, can you help me out?
I didn't realize it was a video.
You're all good. Yeah. Should be.
We could talk for more than five minutes, so it might be for the best. You could go on for a while.
All right.
This is a typical classroom moment when technology fails.
It's cool. It's the usual.
Especially during an observation.
Sorry, Mr. Sexy.
Yeah.
I just noticed an image. That's okay.
You can reenact it if you want.
Yeah, this is fine.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
I don't know if you've got it.
I feel sorry for you. I want to.
All right.
Hold on. I did not realize it was still a video, I'm sorry.
That's all good.
I'm going to have to hear my display and change it back.
So what's your name?
My name is Glenn. I'm a senior at Olentangie High School.
So this is your second year? Or no, teacher.
First year.
It's just one full year.
You can do it two times, but unfortunately, last year, I just didn't have room in my schedule. A lot of other stuff you want to take in high school, so luckily, I got to do it this year. It is a two-period class, so.
And where was your placement?
I've done middle school at Shanahan Middle School in eighth grade with Mr. Luttrell. That's algebra and geometry, first and second period. And then I did, I'm a saxophone player, so I went with Ms. Grimes, also at Shanahan. It's just close to Olentangie. So, and then now I'm trying to get with Mr. Fuller at Olentangie High School, just to see what administrators do on a day-to-day basis. Just something a little more interesting.
Do you have a favorite so far?
Do I have a favorite? Mr. Luttrell, I'm a math kind of guy, so.
You're a math guy. Okay, we need that.
Yeah. I just, it draws me in, what can I say?
We're on YouTube and everything. Fancy, yeah. Yay.
Yeah. I'll just get started before he goes. A lot of our, catch up. There we go. In order to do a lot of these service projects, we need partners in our community to like, you know, sponsor us and give us the way to do all these things, and so we can help them do things that they want to do, too. So you see that People in Need are up there. We helped them with the holiday cleaning house, like we already said we did. And then, as you saw in the video, the Rotary and the Delaware Library were kind enough to donate books and help us out with Read for the Record. And then the Power, what is it? It's Powell Parks and Recreation Department helped us donate a lot of school supplies to, what was it, Kentucky, right?
It ended up at People in Need. We were hoping to connect with someone in Kentucky after the tornadoes.
Tornado.
And so that wasn't able to work out. But People in Need had no school supplies, we learned, so we were able to help stock their emergency services with backpacks and lunchboxes, so.
Yeah. Okay. Next person. One thing.
All right, hopefully mine's after this. State Conference recap, some fun stuff. I went there. So that's where we earned our super awesome trophy. So we had 23 students that competed and 18 qualified to go to the national level. So that's in Washington DC this June or July. So I was one of those people that qualified. It was amazing. I did a creative lecture about all kinds of different things. That was an awesome experience. We placed first in chapter display, and then this trophy actually is from the service project. So a lot of stuff we had kind of talked about for donating and connecting with PEN a lot. So we were also recognized as an honors chapter based on GPA in service, which is even more exciting. So some super awesome, smart teachers in the house tonight, so. Yeah, that's our first-time goings, and I think we did exceptionally well, so I'm really excited. I'm a senior, so I won't be here next year, but hopefully, we kind of reciprocate the same thing. So, yeah.
All right, Ms. Weekly?
Yeah.
Do I toss it back over to you?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
So any questions for the group? Kevin, you had?
Just one comment. It's awesome to see this. This is the coolest thing in the world. I'm going to tell you, teaching is just a huge privilege, and I'm excited to see you as you kind of catch the fire for this. Ignore the chatter about our business because teachers make a difference in kids' lives. And I was thrilled to see your service projects because the best teachers understand that the way you connect and motivate kids is by meeting their needs, and I think you're getting that from the service stuff. So thank you for what you're doing. It's just another example of how our district is pretty cool. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for your oversight with our students.
Great.
Yeah. I'd just like to echo that. I mean, your passion for this is evident, right? It's very clear, and that's going to come across to students as you grow. Just keep doing what you're doing, right? Teaching is a noble profession, and don't ever lose sight of that. It's just amazing. It's so inspiring to hear about it, to hear about your commitment to the community. I wish you nothing but the best, and thank you so much for inspiring them.
Thank you.
Good luck at nationals.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Represent.
All right, Mr. Rafe, you ready for the superintendent's report?
I am, sir, I am. That's another typical occurrence. It's all right. Well, no, and thank you so much, Mrs. Weekly. We're very, this is one of those programs that, you know, was developed by Sue Andrews. Give a shout out to matriarch of Olentangie. Sue started it a long time ago, and Linda Shank, and you guys are carrying it on. It's one of those programs we have that I'm certainly very proud of, and we've hired a lot of graduates, our own graduates, so keep in touch.
Only in case.
I don't know about you, Abby.
Although, I will say this. You're welcome to stay, but we understand if you want to leave. This is probably the least exciting part of your educational career.
Thank you.
After this.
All right, thank you so much. As always, I'd like to start off with thanks, everybody, for being here, and again, thank you for that great presentation. Got a bunch of Live in the Mission slides. We had our middle school students across the district participate in the Math Counts competition. You see there the number of students from each of the middle schools. So we had Devin Zhao qualified to attend the Math Counts National Competition coming up. It says, "Here are our first Olentangie student to qualify for that national competition." So congratulations to Devin. Avina, I practiced Avinav's name like seven times today, and I think I still just messed it up, but Avinav was the winner of the State Spelling Bee Competition. So he'll be moving on to the 2022 Scripps National Spelling Bee in June near Washington DC. So congratulations to that Freedom Trail fifth grader. Big accomplishment. You see his winning word there. Puritas. Probably would have missed that one myself. That is such an intense competition, and it is just incredible that what they go through and the amount of time and preparation they put in. As you know, we have a robotics team made up of all four, students from all four of our high schools. They competed in the first Robotics Buckeye Regional Challenge recently, and they, the team took first place, and they are going to be traveling to Houston for a championship-level competition. That's just, that's been a great program that continues to grow all throughout the district. So congratulations to the Ozone Robotics Team. Something I'm certainly very proud of and something near and dear to my heart. As you know, three of my four kids are in the military or have been in the military, and we've been very strong participants in the Ohio Department of Education Purple Star Distinction Program. So we had 16 additional schools been, were honored as part of this program. So as of now, 19 of our 26 schools have either been recognized as a Purple Star school or renewed as a Purple Star school. And so we're working towards all of the schools having that designation for the work they do to support our military families. If you had a chance last Sunday, Berlin High School had their Student Art Show. It was the first one across the district. You know, typically, they're here, held Sundays here in the spring, and you just see all the art displayed, typically, high school, middle school students all throughout the district. It is just incredible. I've always believed we have the best K-12 art program in the entire state, and the work our art teachers do all across the district is just phenomenal. It's just another area that I have no talent, so when I look at it and see what they're able to do, I am just astonished at what they do. Want to give a shout out to Liberty Tree Elementary School teacher Erin Boodick. She was recognized as one of five teachers in the state of Ohio to receive the Torch Award, which stands for a teacher of Ohio representing character and heart. And Mrs. Boodick has been a longtime Liberty Tree teacher who just has incredible passion. She just does so many things above and beyond Call of Duty over at Liberty Tree Elementary School. So that is certainly a very deserving honor for Mrs. Boodick. And then, you know, we've had some of the musicals in the district. I think this is the final one. Olentangie High School's theater program will be performing Newsies, the musical, here next weekend. As I sent you in my note, getting ready for this meeting, we've had two proms in the district, and as a former high school principal, the most important things about prom are that they occur safely and that then they are over. So it's always the most nervous time for the high school administrators, but had a great, two great nights, Olentangie High School and Orange High School. Had their proms last weekend, and by all reports, things went very well, and the kids had a great time. I think Orange was at Live, and Olentangie High School was at the Anthemum, and I think their, Berlin and Liberty are doing the same here coming up later this month. So as Mr. O'Brien, you mentioned, strategic plan update, just to review for everyone. This is, obviously, we held the work session on April 4th, where we had a facilitator help review all of our goals, the strategic priorities, the strategic objectives, the overall plan that we had in place. Your discussion provided a great deal of feedback for us as a district leadership team. So then we came back the next day with Dr. Weiss and met and talked about all of those goals and the progress we made, being sure to incorporate all of your feedback into our conversation. We then went through the process of updating those 12 goals, and some of them stayed the same, some of them were just minor tweaks to some language as we've made progress on the goals. So we will be bringing that back to the Board as we work to finalize those updated goals. It's very important, something that we really didn't have as part of the previous strategic plan, but we, based on our leadership team discussion, we really think it's important that we define each of those goals. So when we say, what is it, you know, we want to ensure mastery of learning, what does that mean? So it's an easily understandable definition for everyone in the community to know what we talk about when we're talking about promoting a culture of inclusive excellence, or what we talk about when we are, what we're talking about when we're talking about managing our assets wisely. So we're going to build into the plan the definitions of each of those goals. And then it's also very important that we establish the common tracking and reporting methods as we continue to move forward. So we're working on finalizing an updated one-page strategic plan overview, you know, so what that looks like is the forward-facing document for our district. So we'll bring that back to the Board maybe the next meeting or two meetings from now, and then what we will ask is for you to endorse that plan or give any final feedback. And then, obviously, then it's in the hands of our administrative team to enact that strategic plan. But again, I echo what you said, Mr. O'Brien. The work session was very, very good for us as leadership team to hear those priorities of the Board and then how you expect us to enact them. Highlighting action items, we do have a retirement on here for Terry Caton, is the principal of Liberty Tree Elementary School. Terry's been with us a long time as a teacher, an elementary assistant principal, and now building principal at Liberty Tree. It is her intent to request to be rehired for a few more years, so we will be bringing that forward. As you know, there's a process we have to go through to have a public meeting and present that for approval going forward. We have four retirements on the agenda, four longtime outstanding educators, Charlotte Brown, Joy Good, Loretta Kane, and Pam Moffett are all retiring, so we wish them well in their retirements. We have two administrative resignations. Anne Marie Rhodes is assistant principal at Glen Oak. She's moving to the principal position with Southwestern City Schools. And then Lenora Tinscher has resigned to, she's relocating out of state. We have two administrative employment on the agenda. Mrs. Nicole Cruthers, who is currently the principal at Liberty Middle School, has accepted the position as the Assistant Director for K-12 Professional Development, and Mr. Josh McDaniels has accepted the position as Assistant Director of Human Resources. So we are excited to be bringing them here to central office, and have been, they've both been outstanding building administrators for us. So congratulations. Thank you for being here. And then you've got quite a few business office items. We have a GMP with Robertson Construction to, for construction improvements for our elementary school media centers, so those are all being redesigned, and then additional preschool playgrounds at the specific locations in the district. We have a contract with McHugh Construction for improvements to our district administrative offices. Again, those, both of those items were part of our bond package of 2020, so we're just adding some additional office spaces here and doing a little redesign of this space. And I've shared those plans with all of you. We have a chiller to replace the chiller at Olentangie High School, the tap fee for the water service at Berlin Middle School, and those are, those are great things to see on an agenda because it means we're getting closer and closer to getting inside and getting that work done once we have water flowing in there. We've got some roofing repairs, and then we're making an upgrade to our time clock system. We have a fairly antiquated time clock system, and as you know, as part of our digital conversion goal, the incorporation of e-finance plus with our fiscal software and our HR software, this software will interface better with all of those functions. And then, obviously, we do not have students in session tomorrow as our conference exchange day. It's starting to be senior award season, so we'll be out and about at all of our senior award presentations. We'll be doing a state of the schools presentation for Source, at Source Point, just trying to connect with people that don't have children in school. And then next Saturday is our One Community Conference, and our next Board meeting is April 28th. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Rafe? Mr. Dabberco?
Anybody else first? Just questions with that construction schedule. I don't know why it jumped out at me, but it said that hours are not limited, they can work anytime. What does that, what does that look like? I mean, are they gonna, does staff work around? Do they close off that part? Oh, here? Yeah, oh, this, I'm sorry, for here, yes, correct. I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, we've published a schedule for that, for the staff. Some, you know, we've told staff if need be, they can work remotely, depending on what the schedule will be. It's a really interesting schedule as they are going to work through it because of how all the staging's going to be done. We're going to create some shared spaces, so not, because we'll need this room for the, for board meetings, but the orange room upstairs will be used if, we'll set up mobile spaces for people to work in those spaces if they need to be here anymore. You know, now they can just take their phone, plug it in, and it automatically is, the line extension works and obviously use their laptops. So it could be night work as well? All right, Mr. Gordon. Bail me out. Let me, let me tell you the reason I'm asking, because I think about all the different records that might be available, and I don't know what all is stored here, but I'm guessing there's stuff that, student information that shouldn't be just, you know what I mean? I don't know, is that, is that, how does that work? Except my mind at ease that nothing's available that shouldn't be available.
Yeah, the hours during the week while we're working, obviously, there's people will be around, so be supervised. If we have night hours, and we normally do that, if they were behind trying to catch up on the schedule, because we're trying to compact it into two months, so we're disrupting during the summer when a lot of people are already out. So if they're here at night, afternoons, we would supervise them. The work hours being, not being restricted is more for the people to understand that during the day, they may be work adjacent to something that's going on there, and they may have to work in a different room. So right now, we're not anticipating night work, but it was more to let our staff know that we would be working through the summer during the regular work week and that we didn't require them to work after hours or on weekends, meaning the contractors.
So whenever they're working past regular hours, we have a district person here?
Yes. Yeah, they will be supervised if that happens.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Griffith, the treasurer's report?
Good evening. We just have a couple little high
Anything else?
All right. Mr. Griffith, the treasurer's report?
Good evening. We just have a couple little highlights of things that we wanted to bring to everyone's attention. First and foremost, we wanted to kind of an update on Mrs. Hatfield. Surgery, knee surgery last Thursday went well and she's recovering nicely. She wanted us to share her, express her thanks to everyone for the kind thoughts and speedy As Mr. Lester had updated, the facilities committee will be recommend, will be bringing the recommendation of opening Elementary 17 from the fall of 2025 to the fall of 2024. Therefore, the treasurer's office has begun the financial conversations that'll help set the timelines as well as provide documents that will need board approval and such to issue that, the remaining 2020 voted authority. As a recap, in the spring of 2020, the Olentangie community passed a no-new tax bond package to build Elementary 16, now known as Shale Meadows, Elementary 17, and Middle School 6, now known as Berlin Middle School. To continue with the district's strategic plan of resource stewardship, assets are being managed wisely by issuing the 2020 voted authority in waves that align with the construction of each new building. To date, the district has issued $110 million of that voted authority. And then to begin the process, the treasurer's office will provide a resolution materials at the next board meeting on April 28th to sell the remaining $27 million. The next item we'd like to update is our Finance and Audit Committee information. Mr. Ratliff, the other assistant treasurer, and I meet with a few volunteers from the Finance and Audit Committee each year and we go through the general fund budget detail information. This helps the committee members understand the details of the expenditures for the next, the upcoming year and then it also helps us prepare to create and update the spring forecast. That meeting will be via Teams next Wednesday, April 20th. And then after that, we will meet with the full Finance and Audit Committee on April 25th at 6:30 here in the Berlin Room and we review the actual first, the draft forecast and go through items. They make recommendations and we have discussion of what items, you know, for those changes if need to be made. The presentation, the first presentation of the spring forecast is scheduled for the May 12th board meeting and then Treasury will be presenting the spring forecast for board approval at the May 26th board meeting. As everyone knows, the forecast has to be board-approved twice a year and submitted to ODE. We have to submit that by the end of May and by the end of November each year. And then finally, we just wanted to let everyone know that Mr. Ratliff will be covering the April 28th board meeting. So are there any questions?
As a follow-up, if I could get kind of the details of the bond issuances, just more out of information and understanding.
Absolutely.
Municipal bond market's been super choppy, so it'd be interesting to see kind of how our bankers fared.
We'll follow up with that.
Nope. All right.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do we have public participation?
No, we do not.
We do not? Okay. So we do not have public participation, so we will move right into Mr. Rafe. If you want to present superintendent action items, please.
Yes, sir. I'd like to present superintendent action items A through L for approval.
I'll move. Can I have a motion, please? So moved, have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on these superintendent action items? Seeing none, Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our meeting. Thank you, everybody. We will see you on April 28th.
Yes. I didn't call you with any questions.
34 minutes.
I just wrote that down.